Housekeeping apologies to those of you who have heard it several times before. Um, this is a public meeting of the school committee. It is accessible via Zoom. Or um, on Westford Cat, either their online streaming service. Or uh, cable access television and thank you to Westford Cat as always. Um, this meeting will be recorded and uh, posted tomorrow um, through Westford Cat. If you attend via Zoom, um, you will get emailed later this evening. A uh, link to a feedback survey. The school committee uh, appreciates any and all feedback during this process, so please um, fill out that survey. And it will be returned to all members of school committee. The superintendent search of process is um, and has been going on for quite some time. This evening, um, we will be meeting the fourth of our four finalists. Welcome, um, Dr. Matthew Jenger. And um, this is a culmination of a very long day for Dr. Jenger. Uh, he has had a series of visits with school leaders, municipal partners, students, teachers, parents from the special education community. And um, most recently this evening, a broad community forum. This is his final meeting tonight. Congratulations, Dr. Jenger. You're almost at the finish line. Uh, this is the official interview with school committee. It's scheduled for approximately seventy-five minutes. Um, in a few moments, um, Dr. Jenger, I'll give you an opportunity to make some opening remarks. And then we've got about a dozen baker's dozen uh, questions prepared for you. And we'll pass around the virtual mic. And then with any time remaining, um, we'll ask school committee members if uh, they have any follow-up questions, if we have time. Um, since uh, some members of school committee have been um, tuning in to observe. Some of the other forums this afternoon, but not everyone was able to be there. Please don't worry, Dr. Jenger, if you feel like a question is similar or you might be repeating yourself. Because since this is our only official opportunity as the entire school committee and the only um, official kind of public interview. Um, we might not have heard that answer previously, so no worries if you feel like there's a repeat answer. Um, then of course, we'll give you an opportunity to make any closing remarks tonight. And then we will bid you adieu. And we might pop you off the screen, no offense, you're welcome to stay, it's a public meeting. Um, but then we're going to give a brief opportunity to everyone on school committee to um. Share any feedback that we might have learned from our site visit to Arlington. Or through reference checks, that way we ensure that every member of school committee has the same information. And um, the public is, is welcome to observe that process as well. So this is done just to make sure everyone's on the same page. It is not, and I'll clarify, I've done this every time, it's not an opportunity to start deliberating. Um, we're making a final selection. Those deliberations and a vote will take place tomorrow night. Um, and reminder to everyone at home watching, that's tomorrow night, Thursday, March eighteenth. At seven PM, that will start at seven, not seven thirty, as has been the case with our other interviews. So um, Alicia, did I forget anything?
You did not forget anything, but I do want to once again thank everyone who has helped get us to this point. Um, our central office and leadership staff who have um, arranged meetings and helped us with notification for the public. All of the stakeholders who have participated in our meetings over the last few days. Um, and to our partners at Westford Cat for broadcasting this and making it available to the public, so thank you all.
Um, thank you, and um, with that, Dr. Jenger, the floor is yours for whatever opening remarks you want to share with us.
Well, thank you very much for having me. Just one point of clarification, this runs till nine, is that, that your deadline? In terms of the time limit?
Um, approximately, we're trying to, you know, keep some parity between the uh, various final finalists. Um, sometimes we're off by a few minutes here or there, but that's what, we're, we're trying to shoot for approximately that.
Not, not that I want to do five minutes per question, that seems a little bit long for twelve questions, but it's just a good idea to get the scope where we go.
Yep, always good to keep track, but we'll also add some follow-ups, you know, as appropriate.
Excellent, and, and every one of these questions is worthy of a ten-minute answer, to be perfectly honest. So, thank you very much for having me, I really enjoyed the process, I've enjoyed the diligence with, that you've all brought to the process. Um, in terms of the questions people have asked, the groups that you've put together. Um, I had wonderful meetings with students, uh, always impressive. Parents really passionate about uh, their students, asking great questions. Um, the teacher, the leader, teacher leadership team, the teacher team. Again, really wonderful groups of folks asking great questions. One of the things you realize. Is even though I have limited time to ask questions. The questions they ask were all statements of values, right? They want to know how to do this. Um, and they want to know it because it's important to them, and so. The meeting has really confirmed for me the reason why I'm here. Right, I'm here because I'm interested in being superintendent of Westford Schools. Uh, not because I woke up yesterday and said, oh, there's a superintendentcy open somewhere. Westford is clearly a community that's committed to diversity, equity and inclusion, you know, listening to your students when I asked them what was precious. About this community, so many of them answered that we all support each other. Um, which is such a wonderful thing to hear from students, and it was important to them that their school be inclusive and in that way. The next is it's a community that's supportive of emotional, social emotional growth of students. Um, and again, same thing, you heard that from parents, you heard that from teachers. Um, you heard that from the kids, that that's something that they're concerned about and something that they think is really important in the superintendent. Obviously, everyone is interested in academic achievement, people are proud of the outcomes and success of the school district. But they understand that in the perspective of the success of all the students. Um, not just sort of the, the specific, you know, test scores of a small group, and that's again, really important. And then people all ask the same questions about budgets. And they ask them in really thoughtful ways, and the reason I bring up budgets. As a value thing is because the question is not how do I get what I want? But how do we in a reasonable way, given the resources we have, meet the values and goals of our community? And again, everybody was asking about how do we do that? Things lead me to the kind of community that I want to be a superintendent in. Right, those are the communities where the culture is about doing what's great for kids. Um, and the challenge is how do we bring that together, how do we work together effectively? How do we create norms and processes um, that do that really effectively? And so then that leads me to me, um, and you've all read my resume, I'm sure you've all read the article on the ghost, the ghostwriter. Um, you've, many of you have been in other meetings, I've seen you in the corners. Um, so I've done bits and pieces of this. But I'm a person who. Really wants to understand not just how to do, but why and what the underlying features are of what it is I do. And every time I try to look at a problem in schools or a challenge in schools. I'm trying to break it down, not to what is the thing to do here, but what are the values and goals? That we're trying to achieve and are there ways to put together our resources and practice as well? And so I've spent thirty years building a skillset, right? I um, decided I think I wanted to be a teacher around the age of nineteen. Um, when I was doing outdoor education and I remember talking to a buddy. We were both talking about what do we want to do when we graduate from college? And we were like, I want to do this, right, I went, we were running the outdoor program, and what we meant was we wanted to do this. Organizing people and working with kids and making kids grow. Um, and there was sort of a question of how do you find that as, as an adult? Um, and so I knew that I wanted to do that, and around the age of twenty-seven, when I was a dean. It wasn't my title, but effectively a dean in a little private school in New Hampshire. Um, it really struck me that I was really interested in how to organize schools, I was. That right out of college, involved in trying to start a school, didn't even make it on my resume. Um, we were up and ready to go with thirteen students, three teachers and a college intern. Traveling around the United States doing hands-on learning. Um, and experiential education is kind of junior year abroad in America. We had everything ready to go as a certified, as an accredited school in Vermont. Interest rates dropped, insurance rates went up. We didn't have liability insurance, no liability insurance, no board, no board, no accreditation, no accreditation, no grants, no school. Um, which is probably why I went to business school. So I'll cut to the chase, I, I went on this path, going to business school to really look at. How do we support the values of education? Through running institutions that can pay for it. Um, that was really important, but still then I didn't know a lot about education, so then I went on and did about ten years of educational research. Um, traveling around the country to over thirty states. Um, from urban areas to suburban areas to rural areas. Looking at different programs and trying to understand what it was about them that made them effective and how to make them better. Finally found my way back into the classroom, back into schools, I was an elementary principal, I've been a high school principal. And um, I'm happy to say, for whatever reason, I tend to get hired by high achieving districts that want to get better. Um, and I've had the good fortune of being in high achieving districts with a real commitment to all children. Those are places that fit me and my values, and I've been able to make those schools or those programs better. Um, and so Arlington started eight years ago, it was a pretty darn good school. Um, and I think we've only gotten better in terms of social emotional learning. Diversity, inclusion and equity and academic achievement. Um, and really serving all students over the time I've been there. So, I'm eager to hear your questions.
Well, I'm going to start, and I think you've pretty much answered the first question with your opening, but it was. And so I, I'm going to kind of change it a little, it's, there are many paths to the office of superintendent through many districts. Um, with a variety of path options, why Westford, why you and why now? You sort of answered those, so I'm going to ask you maybe the why now? And then how do you see yourself becoming part of the Westford community?
So it's funny, I once was interviewing a fellow who did what I did, that was his answer, and we asked why? And he was, actually it was an online interview, and he lunged forward, went, why Westford? Um, and, you know, it's. It's a really good school district, I talked to my old superintendent, the one from MDI, who's now up in Rockport. I should have given you his number, he's a great guy to talk to. Um, and if you'd like it, I will give it to you. Um, you know, and he was like, that's a sweet district, that's a place you want to work and you'll really fit. And that's why Westford. Um, and. The second question was why now? Some of it has to do with the age of my children. Um, some of that has to do with where we are in our district, you know, we have over the last eight years. It's not that I'm done with the work we're doing here. But we've had a really great run in terms of putting collaborative problem solving in place, changing the way we do discipline. Um, developing student leadership, shifting um, the norms and expectations around teachers. Um, so that they're really embedding social emotional learning in their classroom practice. Um, and we have designed and are in the midst of building a really pretty amazing new building. Um, you know, it's. So when I first came to Arlington and walked around with a superintendent. Um, pretty quickly I asked her, you know, we need to, we needed a new building. Right, and we've been talking about this privately, but can I say this publicly that we need a new building? Can I tell people that this place needs to be fixed or replaced? And so she gave me permission, and you know, we started leading tours and talking to folks about the challenges. But we created a committee and a process called the Future Building Committee. And the Future Building Committee was a pun, right, it's building the future and the future building. And the question was, how do you want to be teaching in the future? What kind of a building do you need to do that, and why aren't you doing it now? Um, and so we began building that future before the building, and we began envisioning before the building. And so we have a building that's being built, and I will be sad to see it go. I mean, to leave if I go. Um, because every corner of that building has an educational philosophy. The bathrooms, the stairwells, the hallways are there for a reason. There's a stairwell being built right in front of my office right now, and I think I said this in the last thing. Where the rails, instead of lining up like this, are one foot apart. And they're one foot apart because as we were going through all the things we'd seen in other buildings, all the things we wanted, all the functions we needed in the building. The science teachers needed a thing, place where they could drop something forty feet. And so that stairwell is one foot wider, so they can drop things down the shaft to see what happens to them. Um, and there will be a plaque at the top explaining that in case anyone forgets. Um, because the building itself is an educational lesson. So I'm excited about that, but why leave? Because I'm ready, because way back when um. I was on this journey because I was interested in that larger systemic leadership. Um, because the school is solid, I've had the same um. The same instructors, the same leadership team in the high school for the eight years I've been there. They can finish my sentences for me, they can run the school. Um, it's really a nice place to be because when I don't come in, I'm really just not worried about what will happen in my absence. Um. And I think they're heading in a good direction. And as I said to the students, and I think it's true, if you can, you should. There's such a need for leadership at high levels in the educational system. As we have seen in the last year, um, the challenges that happen when we don't make good leadership choices and um, have good leadership um, decisions. That if you can, I again, just was talking to my assistant principal from my old school. And you know, was saying to him, you need to go be superintendent in that district, they need leadership. Um, and so I think if you can, you need to. Um, and that's what we teach our students, right, to step off and take those chances, and we need to model for them what we want them to do.
Good evening, Dr. Jenger, a school district's primary mission should always be about education. But for the classroom experience to be successful for our students. Westford Schools must also provide a range of services including. Human resource supports for approximately eight hundred employees. Regular school bus and special education transportation. School food services, maintenance and cleanliness of facilities. Technology infrastructure, health services and counseling support, to name a few. What in your professional experience qualifies you to lead and manage such a large and varied organization? That serves nearly five thousand students and their families?
So one, training, um, I've trained with the MBA, you know, we did strategic planning, we did. Um, business planning, we did structural, you know, budget and long-term planning for organizations. In my fieldwork and educational research, a big piece of that. Was looking at how the institutions that we would go into could. Realist, you know, they say we want to do this, and you say, well, do you have in place? The supports, the programming, the funding, the budgets, the staffing to actually do what it is you need to do? And then, you know, my last two jobs, it's an order of magnitude, right? We had five hundred students in a nine million dollar budget at MDI, Mount Desert Island. Um, and I actually had more control of the budget there than I do here. But here I have a four hundred thousand square foot facility. We house in the high school, the preschool, town IT, town comptroller, the departmental offices. Um, daycare program, um, community education, so we have classes, our building is running twenty-four seven. Um, with programs and people from the community, other things, and we supervise and support that. And um, at its very heart, right, the reason why I want to be superintendent. Um, is because that needs to not be the problem of teachers. Right, teachers need to have the opportunity to focus on the kids. And have what it is they need and be, you know, treated as sort of the customers, they're the frontline folks. Um, that need to be able to do their job and not worrying about whether they can do things or not. You know, in many ways, I think a high school principalship is one of the, one of the better positions, I may think between high school principalships. And assistant superintendent, nobody really sits more closely around sort of the scope. Of um, expectations, but also the, the divisions. So you know, you have in school districts, this matrix, right, of task functions and um. Is it sort of task and function, right, going across and above? And as the high school principal, you have to work with every single department, so all these specialties, you have to work with facilities. And on top of that. I've been the leading face of a two hundred ninety-one million dollar building project. So working with um, the, the building project team, interesting, when we started it, I was surprised. Because there were three educators of eighteen people on the committee, which I thought the MSBA was crazy about, and I now know why. Um, you know, it's me, the assistant principal and the superintendent. There were more accountants on the committee, there were more engineers on the committee. Um, we have a fantastic committee. That group has worked collaboratively together, town, community, building support, explaining this to the community. Carrying forward, um, you know, the educational vision. Which led to a seventy-five percent vote in favor of a two hundred ninety-one million dollar project. Taxpayers on average expected to pay eight hundred dollars a head. A year for that, that building, that's a lot of money on somebody's already a large tax bill. But people saw the need for it, they understood why it was happening, they understood why it was going to be a positive experience for the rest of the community. And at the same time as we voted for that, we voted for an override. And the override passed by sixty-five percent, and if we had not been. Really trusted that we were making the best and meaningful use of um, the program, that the money the town is spending. We wouldn't have been able to do that. And we've done that, um, I know you guys are in the bottom twenty-fifth percentile of per pupil expenditures, we're below you. Um, and we've done that and gotten those impacts with, you know, really effective use of money um, and programming.
Thank you.
Dr. Jenger. Um, traditional classroom learning is not for everyone. And the remote and hybrid models during the pandemic have forced us to rethink how we approach learning. How will you incorporate those lessons learned? And broaden the educational experience of our students to include a range of pedagogical approaches?
So, we're having those conversations right now in the high school in terms of looking at, you know, what were the positives of remote learning? What were the positives around, we did many other things to support learning during this time in terms. Including having more heterogeneous classes, that's where you could do honors or curriculum A in the same class. Um, and um, we changed the length of the schedule, we changed to semesterize. A lot of those we're probably not going to do right away next year. But we built a lot of capacity and a lot of understanding and saw a lot of value in those. And so we're right now getting information from teachers and students and parents about what those experiences were like, what the positives and negatives are. Um, I think the idea of having multiple pathways and multiple ways to achieve the same standards. For students is something we've been working on going forward for a long time, so we have. Um, a program in the school called the Harbor Program, which is for students with complex or chronic mental and medical health issues. Um, and that came out of, you know, a lot of schools have transition programs for students returning from hospitalizations. But we had this realization that um, it wasn't a transition program, students would transition in and out of those programs. And so it was kind of a crutch, not a program, and so designing the program around the long-term needs in order to have goals. And an effort to sort of keep kids engaged and to over-engage them, um, to continue to move them forward, engagement was important. So, there are a lot of things I think we can do, and I think it's unleashing the creativity and flexible thinking which has grown from that. Um, it's going to be important, one of the um, things that's nice about being a principal. Is that there are these places where you can loosen the, the jar, right? You can get it open because you can make it possible for people. So we, for example, we're pretty good with remote learning, we, we've been doing something called MOOCs, massive online open courses in Arlington. For probably five years now, so EdX and Coursera, does anyone know what I'm talking about? Um, so I got a few notes, so EdX and Coursera are platforms that put college courses online. Largely for free in terms of content, although they are moving behind the paywall, which is a little sad. Um, but um, that content is available then with crowdsourced assessments, really excellent content, not great assessments. And so we have done a blended model where teachers can propose one of these and they get paid a per student stipend up to a certain amount. Um, and they can take these classes with students and supervise that the assessment and learning is really happening. And then verify that as a grade on their transcript. Students can propose these and they can take them. Um, and we started that, it was sort of for really highly, you know, successful, very motivated academic students, so we did relativity and. Astrophysics and we did Python and we did Bitcoin, um, and other things where I didn't even know what they were talking about. I taught the science of wellbeing, which is a Yale class on wellness research. But over time, we realized that that model was available to us. To do with students who might struggle or need to plug in to very specific content or issues, and so that's been something, we had about four hundred students. Take MOOCs last spring, we continued to let students do it over the summer. Um, because students had really lost a lot of content and didn't have a lot of activities over the summer, so this summer we continue doing it, and we're doing it. Going forward, that built for us a ton of capacity around doing this kind of remote learning. Um, and so we were much better prepared, I think, to pivot. To being able to reach students, and many teachers now are already saying, I, one of my favorites is our environmental engineering teacher of all people. Says, can I teach my class online next year? Because he finds that these conversations for what he does are very effective, and mostly when he wants the kids, he does field trips. And so it's not that he doesn't want to meet with the kids, it's that he, when he meets with the kids, he wants to be on the side of the stream in a field in the woods. But when he's running the class, he says it doesn't really matter where they are because we actually have great conversations online. In a context where kids are now not socially isolated, having a smattering of those things in the way is going to be valuable. If I'm still in Arlington next year, I'm going to figure out a way to do night school. It's something we've talked about for years. And now it's not that complicated to offer some evening classes online. To students who either are doing internships, want to do dual enrollment, or for students who have difficulty coming into school. Um, and so those blends could serve a lot of different student needs. Um, there's a lot of ways to, to figure this out, and I think, and then last piece. One of the things that we did when I was in Maine, which we haven't done in Arlington because the needs were different. But we shifted to standards-based teaching and learning. And when you start focusing to standards-based teaching and learning, as opposed to sort of traditional grades run through the gauntlet and get a grade. It's much easier to do that multiple pathways, because if you say, these are the things you need to do. These are the, this is the content, this is the skill, these are the work habits, these are the products, these are your experiences, it will get you accredited in English. A kid can say, okay, I'm going to read Shakespeare on my lobster boat. Um, and this is how I'm going to engage with you around meeting those requirements. It's something I've been trying to get in Arlington High, we've done internships. And done work study around building that capacity to do that sort of work. Um, it's not something I've been able to finance and get support for yet at the central level. But I'm superintendent, it's a lot easier to move it forward.
Good evening, Dr. Jenger, it's nice to see you again. Meaningful and effective equity and inclusion can mean different things to different people. What does it look like to you? And how would you communicate the how and the why to someone who's resistant to the idea? And if you could please give us some examples of your work in this area?
Well, first and foremost, what it means is that kids feel heard, seen, safe and included. They feel welcome when they come into the building. The second is that families feel that their history and their values are respected when their kids come into the building. And there are two layers, I think, that we are talking about when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion in the current American environment. One of those classroom interactions. We, and I can talk, I have too much to say about diversity, equity and inclusion, not to bore you. So whatever I say, if I give you examples, I've left out three quarters of them. Um, but you can work on norms and training. Um, and perspectives and ways of talking and discourse in the classroom. So that those classrooms can be safe places where kids are good at coming together and feeling safe. But we have a challenge in our society. Which is, there's this larger institutional environment, and right now in America, there's a little bit of what I call the rage machine of social media. Right, where um, we're being fed sort of constantly. Um, sort of the levels to keep us elevated around all kinds of things, but diversity is one of them. And that's not us, that's not Westford, it's not Westford Academy, it's not the elementary schools, not the middle schools. But it is something that we're hearing and it's triggering the conversation. So I'll give you an example, I, you know, I get letters from people who don't even come to the school. Saying, how do I know that you're not indoctrinating students with this leftist agenda? And I'm like. Because we're not, right, because, but you're not here and I don't know who you are, and I. You know, come to parent visiting, meet your teacher, talk to your kids, and you'll know that we're not. Um, so those two things are going on at the same time. So what have we done? Um, and we're sort of firing on all cylinders, right? One is starting with sort of surfacing voices that aren't heard. So when I started Arlington High School, and I've said this before, and I could give examples, I did the same thing actually in Mount Desert. We began by having focus groups. With students around bias, bullying, harassment and degrading language, what experiences they'd seen, had. What experiences they'd seen, and then what were the impacts on them and their friends? Um, and we had those in different affinity groups. And we had those in different affinity groups across the school. We shared those incident and impact statements with staff and we shared them with groups of students. That led to really firing up sort of a sense of need. Because Arlington, again, like Westford, is a pretty high functioning, pretty friendly place. Kids feel welcome, teachers are very welcoming. When we talked to the kids, they said, our teachers like us, our teachers supportive, our teachers inclusive. But we have these incidents, right? We have incidents of kids saying things or microaggressions happening in class. And we don't feel like the teachers deal with them in ways that we think they noticed. Sometimes we have microaggressions on the parts of teachers and we don't know how to speak about them and deal with them. Because remember, microaggressions are not aggressions necessarily on the part of the person. It is, they're dumb or they could be, but they're often insensitive, ignorant things that we do that are experiences aggressions and have the impact of aggressions on the people who receive them. So teachers don't have to be intent on, right? Intent versus impact, they don't have to be intent on doing these things and yet they may do those things. And so we then went through training with staff around addressing those issues. We had a program called Voices United where we trained students and staff on interrupting the cycle of bias, bullying, harassment and degrading language. Our student council rewrote their, their documents, their bylaws, their constitution. So that their mission is creating an inclusive school in a positive climate. And that's the focus of the student council. They have a diversity, equity and inclusion subcommittee of their own. Out of that sort of supporting against student leadership, our GSA, our Gender and Sexuality Alliance, our Young Feminist Alliance, a Black Student Union, or Asian American Club, which is a club that's growing in the school. I'm probably leaving some out, but those different clubs that were on affinity groups are on focusing on issues related to particular groups of students to give them a safe place to talk about and to have contact. Those have grown and those have become great counterparts for me. Staff have been trained in the ideas training, taking graduate level training. So we've continued to work for it all those. Most recently, following the death of George Floyd, we had a number of conversations and students had sort of a set of initiatives that they were interested in, many of them coming out of our Black Student Union. And so they recreated what we're calling the Anti-Racism Working Group. And they have four or five subcommittees focusing on hiring. So students now are sort of looking at our hiring practices and helping us reflect on that and participating in that process. Curriculum, everyday anti racism, a number of different focus groups. So all of that's been going on and, you know, we have Inclusion Day, Wellness Day, which are conference days. They're meant to build capacity, to have multiple conversations that are differentiated for different people. But the idea is to really create a rich environment of conversations and also a network of connections that give us resilience when inevitably, unfortunately, bad stuff happens. Right? And so knowing that there's relationships built, there's norms already built and we know who to talk to. So we had an incident of, and I've gone on too long, we had a couple of incidents of homophobic graffiti and an incident of anti Semitic graffiti. And one of the challenges, I can write my letter, I just wrote one recently, you know, around the anti Asian incidents that are going on right now in the country. I can write my letter saying, this is terrible and we're here to support you. And some kids will read them and it will be supportive to some kids, but it doesn't really create what they really want to know, which is that their classmates and their teachers and, you know, people around them are really also supportive. And how do you create that conversation? So after some particularly large incidents, we reached out to those student leadership groups to partner with them. And so we spoke and the student leader spoke and then the school spoke. In one occasion, we went out and, you know, students wrote, because there had been graffiti, we wanted to take back the walls of our school. So we wrote all over the walls of the school in chalk supportive statements and independent identity statements around who we were and what we believed in. And we've done a number of different things like that. And just keep that conversation going so students know that their voices are valued and will be heard. Sorry, I warned you, you said diversity, I didn't even get to collaborative problem solving.
Good evening, Dr. Jenga. In a high achieving district like Westford, sometimes our students are afraid to take risks or make mistakes. Modeling healthy risk taking and being willing to admit our own mistakes is one way to help combat this issue. In that spirit, please tell us about a time that you took a risk professionally and perhaps made a mistake and what you learned from that experience.
Well, modeling for students risk taking and modeling risks for, for everyone else risk taking are not always the same thing. For the students, it's willingness often to visibly make a fool, they don't see me when I make a fool of myself professionally. It's not the part of the principal or the superintendent kids see. But you need to also model doing that. So, you know, I've rapped for them on multiple occasions. And, you know, I'm willing to go out there and make a fool of myself with everybody else. When I was an elementary school principal and we were implementing balanced reading and writing, balanced literacy, I trained with the teachers and I was the first person doing the guided reading groups when, when we were, you know, doing it in a fishbowl. And I guarantee you, I was not as good at it as the elementary school teachers were. So everybody felt much more confident that they were not going to look bad if they went after me. You know, and then leading these conversations with students, they're small groups. But, you know, I meet pretty regularly with the GSA, with the BSU, with YFA, you know, and I go in and it's like, I don't know everything, but I'm interested in your input. I'm interested in hearing what it is you want. I'm pretty regularly apologizing for my ignorance on things. Because that's where we are, we are all trying to learn. And so I think modeling those conversations and being open and vulnerable in those conversations. After the death of George Floyd, the Anti-Racism Working Group was not something I snapped my fingers and said, I know what we're going to do, we're going to create this group. We said, we know that we need to do more and we know that there are questions going forward. And I'm going to be avail, I'm going to be meeting every Friday at this time for people who want to help us work on them. And student groups came and had things that were challenging for us, also just things that they wanted to do. And we had a lot of conversations before we sort of came to a decision about kind of the structure of that group. We did a lot of work on norms, on how that group related in particular to our Black Student Union. The Black Student Union said, we don't want to take the lead in this group because we're doing all the work, right? They're a small group of students in a, in a school like Arlington and they wanted to focus on the Black Student Union, not on hiring practices and microaggressions and other things in the school. So a lot of the students in the Anti-Racism Working Group, the majority of students are not black students. We actually work in concert with the BSU, so we consult with in order to have input. But we don't ask those students necessarily to take the lead in the work that that group is doing and we're supporting the work they're doing. So that's not something I was going to come up with on my own. That came out of listening to the students and sort of thinking about where they were on what was going to really be most supportive and helpful for them.
Good evening, Dr. Jenga. As, as I'm sure you know and feel in your own district, a public school district is only as good as its educational staff. Westford takes great pride in our instructional leaders, for our classroom teachers, our special education teachers, our integrated arts specialists, our interventionists, our teaching assistants, everyone who has an impact on the education of our children. So can you provide examples of ways in which you have worked to develop, support and retain high quality educators?
So you need to spot talent, right? People coming in and recruit talent. And that's not always the person who comes in with sort of the resume of the right thing. Sometimes that is about recognizing potential, particularly if you want to hire more diverse staff, given that there's not as many applicants of color, for example. And so I'm pretty proud of the fact that I think I and my curriculum leaders are really good at thinking creatively about how to bring diverse staff into the school and how to support them in growing. I can think of a couple of examples, but one where we had a person who came in, was interested in being a long term sub. And I was speaking with him and he didn't really have the training that we would require even, you know, because we were looking potentially for that to be a long term position. But he was clearly smart and clearly well spoken and good at explaining what he did. He knew his content. And I said, you know, we wouldn't hire some of you here. We're going to get people with these credentials and you're not ready to take over the class. Then I'm going to go talk to the HR department and see whether or not we can create a paraprofessional position where you can support the teachers in that content area in order to get you trained up because I want to keep you. It didn't take very long until that person became one of my stronger teachers. And similarly, in terms of the evaluation supervision process, you have to do it. The new supervision evaluation process the state put in place is challenging because it has such rigorous requirements, but it kind of keeps us honest, right? That we have to check in with everybody every year, we have to have those conversations. For most of your teachers, I always say like, there's a middle group of teachers who I'm recognizing what they do, sort of coaching them towards what we think is the most valued by recognizing positively what they do. There's a small group of real master teachers. If I go sit down with a master teacher, I'll argue with them because you can go straight, you know exactly what they were trying to do and why. So you can really dig into their practice to help them. And then there are the novice teachers or the teachers who are not meeting standard. And with those folks, you need to be a really good observer of good instruction. And you need to realize that giving people clear feedback on what they're doing well, but what they're not doing well is a gift that is not happily received, right? Teaching practice is impersonal, it's interpersonal. And so it feels very much like an attack on you as a person when someone says this thing you were doing wasn't working the way you wanted it to. But if people are open to that, they grow as teachers. And there's at least three teachers at Arlington High School right now, who what I jokingly was sometimes with the department, it's called the treatment, who, who got some very difficult direct feedback about their instruction and went through a long process of figuring out how to improve. Without exception, those are among my strongest teachers now. Because they had the capacity, but they needed to be moved. And it's not just here, it's here, right? Because the problem with teaching is you can take the same instructional technique. And if your view is, for example, teachers succeed, if kids succeed if they want to, it's going to be top down and forceful and pushing kids forward. And if your view is kids succeed if they can, it's going to be interactive and open minded. It doesn't matter. I've seen the most traditional educational tact practices in my research done in incredibly rich and engaging ways. And I've seen the most, you know, interactive, progressive, wonderful curriculum delivered as drill and kill because of the sort of understanding of the teacher about what it is they're doing. And so getting inside that practice to move it forward is, you know, is something that is an act of love. But it's not always perceived that way. And sometimes you realize that as you're having that conversation, it's always like, what is it, can't or won't? You get to a point with some teachers where you're saying, look, this is what I'm asking you to do and I'm not going to stop asking you to do this. We're not going to stop having this expectation. And if you can't or won't, this is going to be very unpleasant. And usually those folks realize that this isn't a good environment to teach in for them. They may go on and teach somewhere else or they may leave the profession depending on where they are. But sometimes people, you know, need to go, that's pretty rare. If you're really direct and clear about what it is you're doing and you support teachers. I've had teachers who got bad evaluations, last piece, come to me and say, what do I do? And I say, well, if your supervisor is telling you, you didn't do something right and you don't know why, you have a right to turn around and say to them, teach me how and show me somewhere that's doing what it is you're telling me to do effectively. And if they can't, then they're not doing their job. But if they are, learn how, watch someone else do it effectively and figure out how to do it in your practice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Jenga, hi, I think I have the next question. And I'm hoping you can provide a time for us or maybe a couple of times, if it makes sense, where you made a decision that at the time you strongly felt was in the best interest of the students, but that proved to be unpopular, whether it be unpopular with students, with staff, with the community. And so if you could just tell us a little bit about what happened and how you've responded to the, you know, to the unpopularity of it.
So it's a funny question because in interviews we get asked that question and I struggled with it before. I was trying to figure out why. One, because I do that all the time, right? We're always making challenging decisions as an administrator. There are so many decisions to make. I think research has shown that the only people who make more decisions in a day than principals are teachers. And so we're constantly making decisions. Why do you have this sort of unpopular response? Almost always, it's because either you were driven by time, right? There was some decision you had to make that was important, but you didn't have the time to do the work and the reflection and to have the conversation. Or sometimes because you missed, you realized, didn't realize that it was one of those decisions. And so you rolled it out as a decision before you had the conversation, like I said before, about goals and values and why you're going to get there. And I'll give you an example, we're doing it right now. We did a lot of work around this year. One of the things that we did this year that we had done, did more of than we have in the past was these heterogeneous classes. And so heterogeneous classes, if students can take the same class, like I used to teach ninth grade English, all ninth graders took it, you could choose honors credit, you could choose curriculum A credit. This year we did that in a lot of classes and we found grades were the same, actually better. 12% more students took honors classes. The teachers were like, I can do this, I'm meeting the needs of students. And so we had a conversation and a number of the classes, we were going to go back to what we'd done in the past because we didn't feel we were there yet. But in a few classes, at the ninth grade level, the teachers wanted to go forward with heterogeneous classes. Remember I said, we're having the conversation now? So we were trying to put our program of studies out and in putting our program of studies out, we thought we were heading in that direction. So it said those classes were heterogeneous. So the community got that as a decision. And the community had not done the work, not had the conversation, not understood where that was. So I have a petition from seventy eighth graders, who I give enormous credit for paying enough attention to figure out what's going on at the high school, put together a petition saying, we don't want heterogeneous classes, we've had heterogeneous classes or they've had homogeneous classes a lot at the, which is everybody together, but not necessarily leveled. But then at the middle school, and we were excited about getting those leveled classes. Regardless of how you feel, the heterogeneous classes were unleveling or any of those things, we are now on the wrong foot, right? Because now instead of it's being a conversation about what is the purpose? What are the goals? What do we get out of this? How do we get there? Where do we want to go in the long term? It's a win lose, right? And there's nothing I hate worse than getting a petition when I probably wasn't going to do something anyway. Because the appearance I've given is that we're not going to do it because there was a petition, which means I just get more petitions. And what I want to have are those constructive conversations with the community. And I learned this lesson when I was an elementary principal. First, because of level issues, the number of kids in grades, we were discussing having a four or five grade, you know, multi age team. But the teachers then in discussing got really excited about it. They did all this work around multi age teaming. But I was a novice principal, now I'm a senior principal, I just screwed up. But then I was a novice principal and I had an excuse, which was we had this great conversation, they got really excited about how it was better for kids. And we presented it to the community as a decision. And fourth and fifth grade parents had never heard of such a thing, they didn't understand why we wanted to do that. And so I had to have a bunch of meetings with parents with pitchforks who came in to understand how you were going to take the poor fourth grade kid and they were going to be overwhelmed by fifth grade kids and you're going to take their smart fifth grade kid and they're going to be held back by fourth grade kids. In that context, we were able to bring everybody together. They listened to the teachers because that's who they trust and that's who's going to educate their kids. And at the end of that meeting, they were like, oh, this is great, we want to do this. But that's a hard thing to do and it's much harder to do. It doesn't, an elementary school is a small number of parents, small number of teachers. At the level of the high school, you don't want to let those things happen. So most of the time it's because either there's an emergency and poor planning on my part is not an emergency. That's just poor planning. Or you Or you didn't plan ahead and realize that you had to do the work.
Thank you.
Hello again. Tough question. So, you know, get ready. What is a book that you've read or a movie that you've seen recently and enjoyed?
So I think they asked that during the first round. And my answer just completely pulls my dork card right out. So I've been reading my way through the presidents. So I've done the Chernow Hamilton, then the Chernow Washington. And having read about two federalists, I realized I had to read about Jefferson because at this point I pretty much hate the guy. So I'm in the middle of a Jefferson biography by Meacham. And then because I'm not a complete nerd, my daughters and I have been watching the entire MCU on Disney Plus. And we've just finished Wandavision. So we're just waiting for Falcon Winter Soldier to come out so that we have another Marvel movie to watch. But if you watch Wandavision, you should know that the postman was my co cabin counselor at summer camp for a year. So he's the key to everything.
Well, we've asked this question of four finalists and you are now the second recommendation for Wandavision. So I guess I know what I'm watching this weekend. Thank you.
You have to go back and watch the Age of Ultron first.
Oh yeah, already seen that.
Dr. Jangar, Westford is a high achieving district that also values social emotional balance for our students. Can you provide some examples of ways that you sought to balance high academic achievement for students with their physical, social and emotional wellbeing?
So I think the first thing we have to realize is that we shouldn't characterize that as a trade off. Right? If you go back actually to George Washington and all the founders, they understood that physical and mental health was the key to being a good scholar as well. The problem is that we tend to focus on achievement culture, not on learning culture and not on self improvement. And so achievement culture is around what classes did I take? What grades did I get? What sort of things can I mark off? Whereas growth and learning culture is about what did I learn and how do I get to be a better person? So every year, you know, so I'll talk about some specific things. I know you guys have done challenge success. We have done our own version of challenge success, those same conversations, looking at a lot of those same programmatic changes. But before that, every year I start with the same speech for the poor freshman. Which is, you know, never let your learning get in the way of your education. I'm sorry. Never let your schooling get in the way of your education. So trashing Mark Twain quotation. And because what we do in school is schooling. Our purpose is education, but education is growth and learning and becoming a human being. It happens all through your life, not just in school. It happens in the halls. School is a very strange, modern invention. Right? A place where we bring together 1,400 or 500 or 300 kids on a daily basis to sort of go through specific academic learning is is an invention of the last hundred years at the most. There were little schools, but they were nothing like what we do now in school. And so this whole thing of grades and, you know, credits and classes and the breaking things up is is really very unique. Some kids are really good at school. And then I say, there's two fallacies. If you're really good at school, most of you here, you think that because you're doing school well, you're getting educated. Right? And you need to stop and realize that you may just be doing school well. You may be figuring out what your teachers want, figuring out how to go through the routines of school, but not really thinking deeply about what it is you're doing and why you're doing it. And so, one, that's super stressful because of the whole fixed mindset, growth mindset piece. You guys nod? We know what I'm saying there? And second, it's a waste of your time. But you go through four years of high school and you get this really great resume in order to get into a college and go through four years of college in order to get a really great resume. And then you don't know who you are, what you are, what you want to do. Right? And so the flip side is there are kids who are not great at school. I was not super great at school K through 12. Wasn't super good at it in college. I got better at it later on. I'm a little bit ADD. I could not sit still in class. I had to be the principal because I could not sit still in faculty meeting. And those students think that because they're not good at school, they're not good at learning, their ideas aren't valuable. They may have worries about their future. None of those things are true. Right? If they put their oar in the water and they keep going forward and they make decisions about what they do with their future, they will be fine. Right? If you graduate from high school, go on to a post secondary plan, college or career and are mentally well, you're going to be fine. There's a lot of anxiety right now in our society because we're not growing the way we used to. It used to be that if you went to high school and you went to college, that you were going to be better off than your parents. That may not be true. But you're going to be fine. You're going to have choices about what you do. You're going to be able to raise your family. The wellness research shows that after you make about 75,000 enough to handle your basic needs, you don't get any happier. And worse, for every dollar you make more, you think you need a dollar 40 more to be happy. So you chase what they call the hedonic treadmill up into your life and you don't get happy. Now that doesn't mean that some of people who are doing very well are very happy. But that's not what makes them happy. And so that message has to be core to everything we do. And then we also need to think about what it is we do in the structure of our schools that gives the lie to that belief because the kids don't just watch what we say, they watch what we do. So if in everything we do, we're still sorting them, we're still valuing the kids who achieve and we're still checking the marks off on all of those things, then we don't really mean what it is we say. And I'll give an example. I know you guys still have rank and GPA. Those are fine. But when you start doing research on the impact of rank and GPA on students, ranking students tell students that they're being sorted. Telling students they're being sorted causes them to take less risks, value their learning less and take less diverse and interesting classes because they're worried about their grades. And rank is in the end also arbitrary. It'd be great if it really was meaningfully telling me who was a stronger student. But I'll have two kids, one of whom took art because they'd never taken an art class before and they thought it would be challenging. And one who took another honors or AP level course that they knew how to do well in. And this kid will rank higher than this kid because of weights and and GPA. When in fact, this kid was actually making a really great learning choice. And so you really need to think about how we do that. And sometimes we have no choice. Right? There, there no matter what we do is going to be a larger achievement culture. There are going to be opportunities offered to kids based on external things and colleges are going to be looking at that. But kids can know that we're, we believe and we can show them the evidence that, you know, if you want to go to a particular top ranked US News World Report school, that's great. Go there. But if you don't, you're also going to be fine. Your lifelong happiness and your learning potential and your security is not going to be different based on which of those schools you go to. So last piece, this is a high school thing, but when I was an elementary principal, I went around on the first day. And they asked all the kids, why are you in school? And every classroom, the leading answer was to get a good job. And this was at the elementary school. And if that's where students start, we wonder why they lose their love of learning and their willingness to take risks and their willingness to explore by the time they get to high school. The reality is, I was an English teacher because I loved English literature and because I felt like the wisdom I got from English literature and being a good writer and a good thinker was the right way to live a good life. It made me happy to do it. It made me live better. If I could convey that to my kids, they forgot about their grades and they learned. And their grades were better anyway. And we have a late start time and we did away with homework over weekends and we you know, I mean, those are things that you have to also look at because we're the employer. And we treat our kids like no employer could ever treat kids. Right? If your employer on Friday afternoon said, oh, I've given you seven half hour tasks that you have to get done by Monday. Right? Some of you probably have that boss, but you wouldn't be happy about it. Right? And so you really need to think about that. I used to say to the teachers, if I did that to you, I'd get a grievance. Right? And they'd be like, yeah, you would. So let's not do it to the kids.
Dr. Jangar, it's often said that budgets are moral documents. They fund your values.
Yep.
Questions have you used to gain feedback from your staff in formulating a budget that reflects the values of the district?
So we have your strategic plan, right? Your school improvement plan every year and you have your budget. Those should be the same. And they need to be strategic values based and collaborative. And they need to be a long term. So it's harder when you first start out, but after a while, you really want to get to the point where the reality is, I don't know about you, but we basically had the same five goals for the last eight years. Right? Our goals are rigorous academics, social emotional learning, diversity, equity and inclusion. Strong support for professional development of staff and budget and facilities management. Right? Those are the five goals. So it shouldn't come as a surprise every year when we're trying to figure out what our goals are for next year. We should be looking at last year's plan. Thinking about the things we were doing, you know, and everything we're doing, nothing should just be, this is just one year. It's a one off. If I'm implementing collaborative problem solving, it's because I've been researching approaches for handling student behavior and trauma and news informed practices and equity and unconscious bias. And we've landed on that as a strategy. And I'm expecting to be doing, working on it for the next five years. So when I put that in my strategic plan this year and I do that for a year, at the end of that year, I'm either going to decide it was a bad idea. I'm getting rid of it. Or I'm going to decide this is how I'm continuing to implement it. And it shouldn't be that at the end of the next year, people go, remember that thing we were doing? Whatever happened to that? There should be a decision that we cross that off the list, right? And we moved on to something else or that we're really doing it. The same thing should be happening with your budget. So, I mean, some of it's about money, right? How many pencils do you need? Do you need new AP textbooks? Do you need new assessments at the elementary level? Do you need to change your book room? Because you've decided you're doing leveled books in a different way and we have all the wrong texts. Do you need more diverse texts at the middle school? Do I need to invest in the library to figure out how to have those texts? All those conversations need to be taking place. But every time you're talking about those values conversations, there needs to be a money conversation. Where is it going to come from? And so after you've been doing this for a little while, you really should kind of have a prioritized list, what you're working on and where you're going with it. And at the top of the list is, you know, 100% going to get funded. Probably, you know, needed to survive, you know, roofs, heat. Right? Some teachers, you know, and then pretty much the meat, right? You know, of what it is we're doing. This is the bone. This is the meat, right? This is the thing. And then there becomes a level of we really want to do this, but we're $400,000 short. Right? In Arlington, I would love to do away with athletic fees. But I have a $400,000 gap. And there's a swath right in there. You know, which may be busing for you, maybe athletic fees for you is clearly a full day kindergarten or half day kindergarten. Probably also, I think going forward, technology around student access to technology. There's a swath of unfunded stuff that you know, if I've got $400,000, that's what we're arguing about. But the nice thing is if you've done this over time, you're not arguing about the things you've decided to fund. You're not arguing about the things that you know you can't fund. They may be on the list. You might get an extra 2 million someday, right? It's worth it to bring them up. But you're able to argue, you know, and to have, not argue, but to have collaborative conversations. If you're talking and we talked, the department heads go back to the departments. The teachers talk amongst themselves. They give that department information. We then have conversations across departments with the department heads about what our values are, what what resources we have and how many staff we're going to get. We share that back with the faculty long before it goes up to the sixth floor. So they understand. Some people understand. And the other thing is if it's long term, it's not who gets it this year? Right? I said to the students, if it's short term and we're deciding right now and there's a cut and it comes as a surprise, it's like the lifeboat conversation, right? It's who are we going to eat? Right? And that's never a good conversation to be in. But if you know, we've seen, you've seen these, I mean, there is the state changes its state aid, the circuit breaker changes every year. There's extra funding that comes in and you are building the airplane. You know, we don't have our budget information for this year because we're spending the money. We have last year's information, a guess at this year's information and we're planning for next year. But we do know sort of the general trends. And we can think about where we can bring in resources and other things and we can focus the conversation on the values. And if you do that, I find that people trust. They may not agree with the choice. But your values were clear from the start. Your processes were clear from the start and their senses that it was a fair process. And then people are much more transparent. And the crazy thing is, you know, the story of stone soup. It actually works. That if you're not feeling like I need to spend it now because I'm not going to get it then and I need to pad my, my requests because I know you're going to give me the minimum anyway. When I did my old school, we every year, because I ran the budget, it was like, I was sort of like superintendent in that regard. I ran the budget. I presented the budget to the school committee because of the weird structure of our island community in Maine. Every year I would say, can I get, you know, your dream budget, your reasonable budget and your bare bones, you know, just to survive budget. So I can see kind of what your needs are. And there were a few people who were the first couple of years like, I'm only giving you my bare bones budget. Because I know that's all you're going to give me anyway. It's just, you asked me for the other stuff so you can cut it. Right? And after a while, they trusted that they could give me their reasonable budget. They didn't have to hide their cards because if I should, you know, it's like being on 128. If I put my blinker on, the guy would know how to cut me off. Right? They, they weren't feeling like they had to not show me their cards because then I would just use it against them.
All right. I have a follow up. I think you've answered it. But then how would you communicate your budget challenges to the community at large while also conveying the district impact to students and staff?
You just have to be honest. My old superintendent, Rob Lebo, said to me once, you know, it's all about trust. Said, you can give them bad news, but if you're ever once caught not telling them the truth, it's over. And so you have to be willing to give the bad news and the good news right up front and you need to do it as far in advance as possible. Because like going back to the question that Mr. Sanders asked, you get in trouble when you didn't do the advanced work, right? When that conversation comes as a surprise, everybody goes, why didn't you tell me? And the, you know, the lesson is you can never give too much bad news too early. Right? Because it's going to be much worse news when you give it too late.
Thank you.
Dr. Jangar, so no school district is perfect, Westford included. I'm glad you're sitting down for that news. But when negative behavior or discipline issues arise, whether they be from students or staff, the community has to respond in a manner that's effective, that's sustainable and culturally sensitive. Can you provide us with examples of how you've built a culture of trust and responsiveness that responds to conflict and behavior issues?
Yeah, so so let me just ask you a question. So there's, there's a school discipline question, which I'm really happy to talk about because the issue of school discipline and collaborative problem solving has been a really pretty core and amazing experience at Arlington. One I'm really passionate about. But there's a second piece, which is the community response, which I think you're responding to sort of how the you're responding to sort of how the larger community perceives sometimes disciplinary issues. Is that part of the question?
That is part of the question. Sure. Yep.
So first, our job is to do what's right by kids. Right? And individual kids. And often and challengingly, that's a private conversation. I don't talk to other people about other people's children. And yet if stuff happens publicly, there's often a request, expectation requirement in the district to sort of know at least how we're going to respond. So, so there's two pieces. One is building an understanding in the community of what your norms and values and expectations are around student challenging behavior. And two, having those communications so that the community can sort of see what they can see, but not see what they can't see. So let me talk about collaborative problem solving. I mean, it's collaborative problem solving and restorative justice. Those kind of have to be your institutional responses to challenging behavior. So collaborative problem solving, I'm, I'm just going to ask the question I think I'd be before. One, I have no idea what you're talking about. Five, I've been trained. Where are people in understanding what I mean when I say collaborative problem solving? That's in fours, of course. Right? So it's a pretty good idea. I know Dr. Avalon has been out to Westford. So at Arlington High School about five years ago, you know, when I first came on board, I looked, we had about 96 out of school suspensions a year. And I sat down with the discipline, with the, the deans and the administrative team. We said, look, we know that out of school suspension sometimes is necessary to serve the purpose of what is, what is punishment? What is, what does discipline do? It tells people the rules are really rules. But what it doesn't do, that kind of punitive discipline is make kids more inclined to behave well. If they're not able to behave well or make kids more connected to school or build strong relationships with kids. And we know particularly that suspensions disproportionately happen to students of color disproportionately happen to special education students disproportionately happened to low SES students. And then have even more negative impacts. Cause we got to stop. And so we pushed pretty hard. We cut the numbers in half between just when I arrived and before I arrived. But then we chugged along at around the same level. And we were looking at positive approaches, discipline, restorative justice, other approaches to kind of building norms and expectations. Small group of people piloted collaborative problem solving. They found it really successful. We then trained the whole administrative team and found it really remarkably successful. So we then trained the whole student study team group, which is all the counselors, all of the folks in the sub separate programs. And then last year, every staff member received at least 16 hours of tier one training and coaching all year long in collaborative problem solving. And then a number of us, there's a leadership team that's in higher level training. And we're trying to build our own training capacity in the school. The outcome of that was that challenging behaviors that led to discipline dropped by 55%. Challenging behaviors that were about conflict dropped by about 70%, depending on how you count. Challenging behaviors between students and teachers that were conflict that led to suspension dropped to zero. And the reason why that's important is because in those interactions, not only are you dealing with behavioral challenges, challenging behavior, by the way, is when students don't meet your expectations. It's not necessarily, you know, it, there's a lot of different things, ways in which students might not meet your expectations. Our kids are pretty well behaved. So enormous amount of the training around kids not meeting your expectations is around student engagement, which doesn't even address sort of discipline. But it's where teachers make the most use of the program. And collaborative problem solving, because it starts with empathy and listening to students, interrupts the cycle of unconscious bias and builds relations. So it's also a really effective strategy around diversity, equity and inclusion. The reason why that's important is because one, you just want to reduce those issues. But invariably, things are going to happen. We've had, you have unfortunately bias incidents, which become really pub, public. We've had graffiti incidents. And sometimes those are really well known. And then what we really have to do, and it's not always easy, is we're going to do right by the kids. We're going to have those conversations. We're going to engage in restorative justice. We had a big incident a number of years ago where a large group of students came into the school to do a prank. It turned into vandalism and then connected to the vandalism, there was graffiti. The graffiti was homophobic and anti Semitic. The problem with that sort of thing is it's widely seen and experienced. Lots of kids are affected by it. And often invariably, the story about what happened gets completely distorted. There was one swastika on a garbage can 40 feet away from the school. But NPR reported that 14 boys came into the school and painted swastikas inside and outside the building. You know that by the time you untangle all of that, you're going to find that it was one kid after everybody left. But that's not necessarily a story that you can tell clearly. So we explained the process. We explained who we were working with. We worked with the town, the Human Rights Commission, Communities for Restorative Justice, the police, the, the town manager, all those folks got together. We made decisions about what we were going to do. We worked with those students. But that process, even in a restorative justice model is confidential. There were representatives from the Rainbow Commission, from our Jewish community. They came to those meetings and engaged in the restorative justice. And they spoke back to the community. But the community didn't get to see who or what was happening. And so it's not always fully satisfying for the community. We had a four, number of forums in the fall after this happened, where we explained the process. We explained sort of things that had happened. We read some letters from some of the students that have been involved. And so, you know, those things are really challenging and, and they're not, they're not fully satisfying. But we did right by the kids. The kids learned from the experience and healed from the experience. And they got better and many, many students in our, you know, I met with the GSA students from the GSA were part of the restorative justice, like those conversations happen. And over time we built those relationships. But the community doesn't always get everything they want out of those things.
Thanks a lot.
As the chief executive officer of the district, how do you keep your committee informed? In particular, what is your strategy around the issues that are your responsibility? But where the school committee may also have an interest?
My apologies for jumping in Ming Chen, but we are running a little over time. So these last two questions, we will have to just make sure that they're a little shorter, just to be fair, to leave you some time for closing remarks and be fair to our other finalists. So just needed to throw that in there. Thanks.
Sure. So the simple answer, right, is the school committee is responsible for policy, goals, budget, setting goals and evaluation and hiring the superintendent. But the reality is that if you say something's a policy, then it's a policy. Right? So if you have a policy that says we're using collaborative problem solving, it may be a practice, but you just decided if you say our grade scale is A, B, C, D, or X, Y, G, Z, that's a policy. So I think the first thing, and I just think about entering into this community. I think it's really important that we all experience a sort of common experience of doing retreat, doing a training together, thinking really clearly about processes and norms and expectations and building those lines of communication and understanding. And then doing that on an ongoing basis. Because the school committees change and because expectations change. And so I actually think that a really important part of the superintendent's job is to help the school committee frame the process. Right? So when you're doing that long-term strategic values process, we need to have a conversation upfront, like I'm going to come to you after about 90 days on the job and be like, this is what we're working on. And this is how we're going to know if we got there. And this is how I'm going to tell you if we got there. So that at the end of the year or at the end of that process, we're not all hunting around, trying to figure out what the metric is for whatever those goals are. But if we've decided diversity, equity and inclusion is a goal and we're working on these things this year, at the end of the year, how are you going to know whether I hit those targets or not? And so because those are, I mean, we can do a year and we can say, okay, how are we doing on diversity, equity and inclusion? Right? Like it's an ongoing movement, right? Is, is everybody happy now? Are we inclusive? Of course not. Right? There are always issues around this. So what are our metrics going to be? What are our measures going to be? Is it actions? Is it outcomes? Is it particular measures and looking at those and how we're going to talk about those? And then I think, you know, the last piece that I did with my old school committee was we, you, you do kind of come and it has to be about conversation. You do kind of come to an understanding of things that you need to check with the school committee about. Right? Because they're going to take an interest because they are controversial, because they're not a place, going back to Mr. Sanders' question again, they're not a place where the community is quite in consensus. And so whether or not it's your business or whether or not it's too much in the weeds or too much not in the weeds, I could argue, we talked about GPA, that, you know, we should do away with class rank. I could have a conversation with all the principals. We could all decide we liked that. And we thought that that was good for kids. And technically that's an instructional practice. But you know, that's a community conversation. And so there should be no surprise that that suddenly comes out of left field at a school committee meeting or in the back of a program of studies. That's a conversation I need to call the school committee chair. And that's what I did a lot. A lot of the conversations were, you know, calling the school committee chair and saying, so here's an issue that we're looking at, you know, whatever that might be, starting a night school. Where do you think people are on that? Is that something that we need to have a conversation about? Is that something that it would be easier for you to present about? And so the idea is no surprises. Right? That you kind of know where we're going. One, because we've got this bigger plan and it's pretty clear what we're doing. Two, because as interesting things come up, we're giving you a heads up and asking. And three, because you guys as well, there's nothing I hate worse than being in a school committee meeting and some question comes out of left field. And, you know, I may or may not know the answer. I may or may not have the data, but I certainly don't have it right in front of me off the top of my head. And then we look like we're in conflict. I look like an idiot, which is never a fun thing to do on camera. And it undermines support for me, the teachers, the community and you. And so we need to disagree. Right? Good teams disagree. Good teams argue, good teams challenge each other. But they do it in ways that are constructive and safe and build relationships.
How do you view the superintendent's role with the town administration? Given that Westford consistently ranks high in academic performance, but has a budget that spends significantly less per pupil than comparable districts?
So the same is true of Arlington. Actually, we spend less than you do. And that's okay. I'm not trying to spend people's money. Right? We're trying to do what we can do with a reasonable budget. And part of why that's the case, I'm sure in Westford is you have no industrial base or you have a very small industrial base. So your pure pupil expenditure may be lower, but your average homeowner is paying a good chunk of money. And that's really what matters. You know, you're not, it's great to say it's, it's a great deal, but it's not a great deal for the person who's writing the check. Right? And so I think you have to, it's the same thing, collaborative values based and strategic, you have to sit down with the town. And this is what we did in Maine. It's what we did as part of the building project. You have to have conversations. I mean, we're doing this about the DPW, which is right in our backyard and being rebuilt. We house IT, we house facilities, we work together as a team. And so you have to sit down with the community and say, in the same way we're talking about, you know, do we spend money on kindergarten or on athletics? Do you spend money on police? Do you spend money on Friday? Do you spend money on the, the school district? So helping to structure that conversation so that we all know with scarce resources, what are our community goals? And what role does this, this school district play in that? And how do we work together as partners? And one of the questions the municipal folks asked was about sharing IT, sharing facilities, sharing budget services. Those can be great ways, one, of saving money. And two of again, building a more collaborative environment as long as everybody's sort of clear on kind of where they fit within those roles. And so you know, to the extent that we, we work together. When I was doing my research, one of the things I noticed was you never went to schools where there were great schools and terrible trash collection and horrible police. You don't get a town that has good services and good support by valuing one of those institutions above the other. It has to be across the board because everybody's paying taxes and everybody's looking for services. And the value of the community is across the board. And so it's, it's a collective thing. If we're all doing a good job together, the town is going to support us. We got a 65% vote on the override, a 75% vote on the new building. And people who live in Arlington would tell you, my secretary keeps telling me about like her tax bill. It's through the roof. From her perspective, right? And she's a secretary. She's paying a ton of money because her house is worth a lot of money because she lives in Arlington. And so you really need to make sure that you're spending people's money to give them the services they value. Is that the last two questions? I came in with two minutes to spare.
Yep, yep, you're good. So we don't really have time for any follow ups, but, but certainly if you would like to leave us with some closing, closing thoughts, the floor is yours.
I think we've covered an awful lot. I don't think you need to hear me talk more. I, I just want to say I've really enjoyed the conversation. I've been honored to be part of the conversation. I think the questions that I've heard from students and teachers, municipal folks and all through the town really tell me what I thought coming in, which is that Westford is the kind of district that one is already achieving well and has an enormous amount of potential to be a really fun and enriching place for kids. I think we can unleash a lot of creative energy and a lot of entrepreneurial spirit. And I hope I have an opportunity to do that going forward. And I don't envy your, I've looked at the resumes of my, my competitors. And I think you're lucky to have a really strong slate of folks and I don't envy your decision. So have a great night and good luck tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for, for all your time today and all the, the effort that, that you've, you've put in and for arranging the site visit for us. We had a really good day in Arlington. So thank you for, for being part of this process with us. So thank you very, very much. We will now bid you adieu. You're welcome to stay as we, as we wave goodbye on the screen. And committee members, now is your chance to share information from that site visit. And we've had a little bit of time gap between when we were in Arlington and where we are today. So does somebody want to launch us? I'm not seeing anybody waving at me. I don't have my notes super organized, but I will do my best to get us started. Certainly, things I heard that, that stood out from our conversations and a lot of the things were, were some of the stories we heard today about Dr. Jenga's handling of the vandalism situation, the, the logo imagery. The the building project came up a number of times. Collaborative problem solving. Certainly there were, there were definitely a lot of common themes in comments. One person I made note, talked about his data-driven problem solving and called him a big education nerd. I think that tracks with some of Dr. Jenga's own comments tonight. He's used to dealing with very involved parent groups. One of the school community members commented on his high quality presentations to school committee. And that he always has justifications for his decisions. There was the discussion about certainly co-teaching and the change in classes that he talked about. Strong communicator. Um, strong communicator. Um. Um, engagement with students, certainly the, um, anti-racism working group. We talked to some of the students that were involved with that. Um, we had some really, really engaging conversations with, uh, some of the students and the work that they're doing in Arlington. And, um. A couple of teachers did, did comment, um, on Dr. Jengers, uh, um, fondness for talking and sharing information that sometimes. Uh, um, meetings, meetings went long, uh, but, uh, but I, I think that was, that was said in a, in a jovial way. Um, that, um, that he is supportive of, of staff, um, can handle difficult topics. Um, certainly bu- believes in, uh, the, you know, um, believes in. Um, supporting staff and, um, about work-life balance. Um, and mental health of staff. Um, I think that's, that's my main takeaways. Um, if somebody else have other things they wanna, um, jump in on. Uh, Avery?
So for the teachers, the one thing that I thought was really loud and clear is that he is a true champion of the students. Um, that he will, um, do what it takes to, to make sure the students are getting what they need. He has a vision. Unflappable, strong in crisis, leverages resources well. So I thought those were some interesting ones regarding his support of the students.
Um, Valerie?
Yeah, I have a couple quotes that, um, stuck with me. I could add. Um, I think this was the municipal group. Um, in regards to the, um, like, like Gloria said, that there's a, there was a lot of discussion about how the. Um, high school building project has been handled and using that as frankly, a success story, in my opinion. Um, and admitted that there was a lot of divisiveness around the amount of money, the architecture and that it involved an older building. But that he tackled each issue honestly, insightful, um, predicted the objections and concerns, showed humility. Always talked to the groups that didn't agree with him, was never patronizing. And had facts to address their concerns and always prepared. Um, to your point about, um, you mentioned data-driven in your comments Gloria, and I had written down that someone, um, coined the turn. The term Jenga algorithm. Um, for him always having numbers ready. He's a numbers guy, always has the data. Um, somebody in central office said that he sees the big picture and analyzes a situation holistically. With the moving parts, understands the systems and sees extensions of what's involved in a problem. Um, and a teacher said that when he came to Arlington, he didn't have an orthodoxy and an approach to just plug, plunk it down. He worked in the opposite way. He's an observer. He's smart, sees the pieces and then fits them together. Um, the pa- apparent comments about the, um. Like discord within the community about, um, issues, he said, they said that he's often out and ahead of the discord. And addressing issues before complaints. Um, one teacher said, I felt more supported this year than any other year. I cannot believe how supported I feel. He makes time for a conversation with you.
Um, Alicia?
Um, you all covered most of what I had, but I did also flag that, um. When we were talking about management style and delegation, whether or not, um, Dr. Jenga could delegate. There, there's a strong delegation there and it's more towards finding someone's strengths and delegating. Um, problems to the correct people who he feels can best solve them. Um, there's a lot of feedback on not shying away from, um, digging in on DEI issues. But also having high expectations of everyone involved. Um, and frankly, uh, the building project was a theme throughout the day and it does sound like it was. A very large project. We've done smaller projects in Westford, but this was a very large project and there was a lot of praise for how it was handled. Not only budget-wise, but also communication-wise.
Um, Ming Chen?
Um, I was with the municipal group, uh, so, um. Basically the I, uh, I saw O, CFO and then now the town DEI, Human Rights Commission. Um, very similar comments to what you guys have been talking about. Um, the building effort definitely, yeah, it's a three hundred million dollar project. Um, Dr. Jenga can't actually need that effort, um, very successfully. Um, prepared, detailed, and then, um. And then basically in the building project, every color or every detail, Dr. Jenga is actually looking to. Um, for example, the interior of the new high school. Um, ADA compliance, uh, involved the disability commission. Um. The restore, uh, the I saw talk about, um, the restorative justice, uh, uh, I think, uh, that's also something which Dr. Jenga mentioned.
Um, Chris?
Yeah, just a few more. Um, on the municipal side, somebody said his bandwidth is enormous and that he's even keel, always has a smile on his face. Uh, leadership said he's always someone you want to bring into a meeting, helps move things over. And that he's able to resolve things in a way that always felt all right, that he's talented and understanding human interactions. Um, we had a parent say that he embraces difficult topics, even when he himself is being attacked. I had a student say, if you email him, he always gets back to you. Uh, they were impressed by that. I, I, I wrote down multiple people in different meetings that he's unflappable. And I think that's it. That hasn't been that, thanks.
Uh, anything else on site visits? Um, reference checks? Avery, is that you?
It was me and I had great conversations with his references. Um, I felt like I could talk forever from, to one of them. But I tried to synthesize it down. Obviously we've learned he is a talker. I did hear that. Um, but in a good, it's, it's a good way. I mean, he, he hears from everyone. He builds relationships. He actually developed the faculty senate so he could, um, communicate with the, the staff. I thought was great. He does take some initiative. He takes initiatives. Uh, they gave me a number of, um, programs. The fully remote schedule, all these different things that he has implemented during his time. Um, he has a broad view of issues. Uh, he's good, as Alicia said, good at delegation, but is also willing to get hands-on if needed. He handles parent interaction very well, like Westford Arlington is hungry for details. So he, he's able to communicate well with that. Um, advocates for what he feels he, the school needs. And interesting was when I asked about challenges, the challenge was the loss of direct student contact. He is very student-centered and student-involved and the person felt that, that he would miss that student interaction.
Um, great. Anything else or are we ready to adjourn for the evening? Um, okay, nobody's waving at me. So thank you to everybody on the committee for enduring a very long process. Thank you to everyone in the community who has stayed with us through a very long process. Um, for those of you who attended via Zoom tonight, you will get an emailed, um, link. And we would love to hear your feedback. Uh, this is a very important decision and, um, we want as much input as we can get from the community. So, um, thank you for being with us and providing us with your input. Um, we will be back here on Zoom and Wesford Cat tomorrow night at seven PM. Um, not seven thirty, tomorrow night is a seven PM start time. Um, so we will be back at seven o'clock tomorrow night and we will be having our final deliberation and vote. About future leadership for Westford Public Schools. So, um, please join us. And, um, again, thank you to everyone for, um, all the effort and time and thought that, that's gone in this process. Thank you to. To Chris and Alicia and Sean, um, and for being the, the initial search committee that launched all of this in the fall. And everyone else will, will do all tons, sorts of tons of thank yous tomorrow night, because they really need to happen, because. This has been, um, a long and exhaustive and thorough process, but, um, but I feel really, really good about it. So. Um, thank you to, to everyone and, um, we'll see you back here tomorrow night. Uh, motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
And vote to Avery?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Ming Chen?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
Aye? That would be unanimous. Um, take care everyone. Be well.
See you guys tomorrow.